This is a regular meeting, um, June the 24th, 2015, 4:00 PM. I would like to thank all the people here today and we all have a welcome, you picked the country out of the nation. And I'd like to start off and ask Randy Goins to say thank you.
Father God, once again, always come, God. I must admit, I never know how he has been on high school. God, we want to thank you for everything that you have done for this county up to this point in time. We thank you for these members. We thank you for the citizens of this county. Lord, we ask that you help us do everything that's right in your sight, God, and that's right for this county, God. God, we thank you for the heat. Thank you for the air conditioning. Thank you, God, for everything that you have blessed us with in your name, with these in all the prayers. Amen.
Number two on the agenda, do we have a motion to approve that?
Let the motion prove it, Jim.
Okay. Any discussion? I want to take a raise the right hand. Down at number three, approval of minutes 5:27 and 15, require a motion. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of 5:27 and 15?
I may have approved it.
Is there any discussion? Only favor, raise the right hand. We're down to another four rounds. Public hearing, Sheriff Jag Grant.
Sheriff's, by my understanding, the sheriff's department ran the advertisement, is that right?
Yes.
For the Jag, like we do every year. And I'm not sure if they've seen the buyout, but you buy some stuff on the blue, you know. Sheriff, if you want to come up and just give a little about that, that was the last Jackson you did.
Mr. Chair, we were awarded and received our Jag money this year is fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars, which we will put towards the purchase of a patrol car, a Dodge Charger patrol car. And that's basically what we've done the last couple of years is try to use that money towards a patrol car. And we'll do the same, obviously.
Do we have any other questions for Sheriff? Thank you for coming and.
Sheriff, you said that's Jag money grant?
Justice assistance grant money, yes.
You've been getting back money every year for the last two or three years, you said?
It's been coming every year since I've been here in summer math. This is the lowest amount we've gotten before.
There's enough here, hasn't it? We need to approve, you get a grant, you want to get it?
It's an automatic thing. It comes to law enforcement agencies. I know other agencies get different amounts, it must depend on the size of the agency.
That's good. I wish it was three times that.
I wish it was, but we're certainly appreciative.
Okay. Any other question? We're down to number five now, new business, 5A. Is it some air conditioning unit for the kitchen?
Yeah, this is an old part of jail, the air conditioning unit went out. We sent it out for seal bids. Doug Miller, Dylan Dean Cole came, looked at Barry Bird and Michael Medlin. The only one we got bid from was Doug Miller. I think part of it is right in depth because in the ceiling, I think we had to cut out the ceiling, it's got some, I guess, wire we got to cut through and weld back once they put the unit back in. I think the unit's about twenty years old, we'll get it replaced and get it.
What was the bid, what?
I haven't, I'm opening it now. The only one we got. And what is, it's a fifteen ton split heat pump. It's nineteen thousand.
I know they got that air conditioning for the kitchen, kitchen, that's the whole place down there.
I see that section.
Okay, is that certain?
Six.
Okay, any discussion? If not, only favor, raise the right hand. We're down to five B, South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice, memorandum of agreement that was 2015, 2016.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, uh, every year, we're required to, uh, to contract with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice to, to house juveniles, um, because our facility, like most facilities in South Carolina, do not have a place to house juveniles, uh, do that, Sheriff. Uh, but, uh, we've done this for a number of years. Uh, what we, what they do is they charge us fifty dollars per twenty-four hour period, but the detention periods of between one and twenty-three hours should be charged as a half day of twenty-five dollars. So depending on how long they're up there for, you could potentially pay fifty dollars or twenty-five dollars depending on how long they stay there. They require us to do it every year. Uh, and I, as far as I know, this has been many, many years we've done.
I'm familiar with it. I care about most of the people, myself. We used to take care of them at Florence, but then they changed it and we don't have any sort of foot care there. It's the same price they had going though.
Same price, and really, this is, this is the same agreement you already got.
Is that certain?
Yeah, I made a.
Okay, is that certain?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Only favor, raise the right hand. We're down to five C, Coast Pumblin, agreed to.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, uh, what, uh, Mr. Bose and I looked at that and I think I had Steve Rogers, number two, who's our tax assessor. And, uh, Steve and I had talked about a couple of things about asking council to postpone it, uh, for a year. And what we'll do is we've got a little ordinance passing, so we'll have to pass an ordinance.
Right.
But I asked Steve to come and speak to us and ask us why we need to postpone it for a year.
Well, I talked to Chris Miles, he's the Department of Revenue representative for our area, and he said it'd be, before he cut it out, he was writing a letter to him. I've had a, my deputy assessor has left as a man for Auburn to marry anymore, and he left this last month and was out to have some surgery here next couple of months, hopefully. And, uh, he said it'd be just a cut and ride.
So you postponed because of personal reasons? What's the reason that you postponed? That you asked?
Well, we have, uh, for personnel, you know, deputy assessor, he's, you know, big head, and then I'm gonna be out for a while. And, uh, I mean, we can't get it done, but, I mean, uh, the economy's about the same as it was last year. Housing values has gone up just a little bit, but, you know, not big. Uh, the laws changed about assessing properties. We've basically got ATI laws we go by now, which is assessable transfers of interest, which is sale prices, which I live on the brief list, but that's what we've got to go by. And they put a limit on what you can raise the bag, unless you do, you know, work in a profession. But it would, I think it would be easier to make it, you know, easier for us to get by another hearing. They've got a couple of people getting mad and everything, you know.
How many people work in your office?
Uh, six right now.
Six, right. And the person that left, he went to marry, you see?
Yes, sir.
How long was he there?
Three and a half years.
I asked you a question. Now, I don't know the requirements, so you want to fill his seat, that's right, is that right? You got to fill his seat.
I've got a opening, yes, sir.
And you, when we're talking about tax assessment. I know for a fact that you have someone that work in your office that's been there twenty-two years. Now, what is, what is your requirement as far as that person getting promoted up to that seat?
Well, uh, you need a license, a present license.
She can't work to that, there's no way she can fill that seat too.
She can, but yes, but, I mean, like I said, she doesn't have any license, she doesn't.
Would you be willing to work with her if she was to try to get those licenses? Twenty-two years is a long time to work anywhere and keep seeing people come and go, come and go, you know, and you never get opportunities to get promoted up to that top job.
Right.
Just get, have the opportunity. She can't get licensed, that's a different thing.
Right, I mean, Jimmy, but she had twenty years to, I mean. But, uh, yeah, I'd be happy to, I mean, but, uh, I'd say it's, uh, it's hard to find someone with licenses. And that's why the last guy, David, he had license, that's why he was hired, and plus I'd known him for years from, you know.
Well, he left and went to marry. Uh, we paid less to marry, or why did he leave and go down there?
No, we, we gave him a little raise to come here. Not his qualified.
He ran for county all-rounder.
And won.
And actually won the election.
Right. Yeah, that's on his resume, I mean, he, you know, he improved.
What did he win, then?
Okay, um, do we have a motion to Coast Pumblin, sir?
I'm waiting on that.
Okay, we made a motion, this is our.
Second.
Any more discussion? Only favor, raise the right hand. Okay, um, we're down to five D, Recreation.
We've got a bunch of, a whole bunch of them.
Okay, you should have all these in your packet. One is Dillon County Fire Station number four requesting 57857 from Hillwoodie's Recreation Fund to be used for fire training material. Randy Goins had one for the new Jerusalemfold in Church of God, and he gets a new two hundred and fifty dollars for that one. Y'all have the City of Dillon Parks and Recreation in your folder, that, um, they're wanting you to do an ad, um, for the sponsorship for 2015 South Carolina DC Major State Baseball Tournament, which is due by the seventeenth or the twenty-second.
Do you need to know?
Y'all want to do that? We would need to know this one, whether y'all want to do it as a whole, or you want to do it separately, or what do you want to do. A fourth of a page is thirty-five dollars, a half a page is fifty, and a page is a hundred.
Any discussion?
County, did you not say county?
Next, general fund, figure out general fund.
Do we need to vote on that one thing before we get through the rest of this?
If I can come out, general fund.
Do we have a motion to take it out of the general fund?
I'll make a motion, take out the general fund.
Is that certain?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Only favor, raise the right hand.
Okay. Um, then there was one from Powerhouse Christian Church, Reverend Dean Page, this one came from John Williams.
John Williams might not forgive them fifty dollars.
Anybody else?
Well, I got a little.
You want to give what you got left in you?
I'll just hold out.
What is it? What is it?
This is, um, the Powerhouse Christian Church is holding a fun day on June the twenty-seventh at Dillon Soccer Field, and they will be having free food and games for the children, and they're asking for any help toward that, that donation, we appreciate it. And then we have the Outgrowth Community Family Day.
I want to give the votes, but I have less than my account, because this is the last month, doesn't end for that.
Then we have the, um, for baseballing, softballing, um, this is just for the softball. And then we had, um, Makia Murphy, who, um, London, or she is in Sycamore County, and she is competing for in South Carolina. Um, Archie did this one, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have the sports report, the high school sports report, and each one gets a hundred fifty dollars. And I think that was, I think that.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve the recreation number four?
Do we have a motion, Mr. Chair?
Is that certain?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, only favor, raise the right hand. Damn it, everything. Down to number three.
That was new.
We, we don't want to find a voucher there, but we have to sponsor that.
You don't have to, but they were the same price as twice family. So they said with that league or something, those dollars, those two.
Is everything all right for everything all right?
Yeah, yeah.
Down to number six, now down to finance report.
As of May twenty-sixth, I mean, June twenty-sixth, uh, currently, we've got a million, one hundred thousand more expenditures than did revenue compared to last year, and I think last year was about, revenues were about one point four, four million short. So, and we came out about even last year, so I'm looking, this did the same thing that we did last year. So we should get all that revenues in, we shouldn't break about even. As far as, I guess, we do go to capital expenses, but at the end of this year, we should be about two million dollars short on the capital expenditure. Our front balance should, at the end of the day, should be around about six and a half to seven million.
Mr. Gay, can you explain this report? Tell me, I mean, it's got two dates on it. We got reconciled account balance as of May fif, two thousand fifteen, then you got her side, they were at six sixteen fifteen, and you bought six million something along what you said, but then it says it's a reconciled bank account. I'm still confused, and I've been saying this for so time that I still just don't know how to read this.
Okay, um, I would assume that these figures she's getting is probably for the end, at the end of May. Um, and I guess she just, when she sent it over, she paid it on six sixteen. But, um, as far as the, the total money that we have in the account is like seven point eight million, and we've got a hundred ninety-three thousand savings, because the total bank balance, we got eight million. But out of eight million, uh, that million on the debt service, that's reserved funds, that only thing that, that money can be used for is repaying of the debt, general cash bonds, and the same way, we basically just told them money for Trinity Behavior and, or court, or trial support. So we really don't have access to that money.
That's, I reckon that's the point I was trying to make, right? My question is, is, uh, this is not the money that we oversee. It's a reconciled report, it's jammed up, congested with other people's money, that's what you're basically telling me? Or is this what we, so we, doesn't matter to council, we oversee, or you don't know?
No. Well, it's in our account, but some of it, the six million, seven, six million dollars at the bottom, that's what we have control of.
Yes, then how is it reconciled with somebody else's money?
Well, that money comes out, the other fund is in our account, but it's already preserved for, for city purpose.
Okay, I'm gonna let you go with that.
Can't bother having any more questions.
Yeah, one more question. Clay, can you talk to me just a minute? I don't understand this vendor report, you know, with all this contractual work, all this different money that's.
That's all it says, professional services.
Professional services.
From legal costs, legal services, professional services being a property, so.
You know, we're working on the budget, where do we get all this money for this legal service fund?
Basically, it's a project we incur year to year. We, we, I think the current expenses associated with that project.
This is coming over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, somebody else's land we bought for the course property, Fort Shur property, some other land we bought, landfill and stuff like that.
How much legal fees is this?
Whatever, thirty, forty thousand, something, I'm giving a rough number, thirty, forty thousand off that, you know. But, uh, a lot of that's to do with, you know, Lomond Gordon, there's a lot of credits involved with the two, and there's some other additional fees, they say, you know, we bought land, the landfill, we bought land, like we're still in the process of getting the landfill cleared, and doing that part of it, too.
But we're not listening to any credit discount expenses, thank you.
I hope not.
It's a lot, just a lot of money right here, you know.
Well, the good thing, I mean, you know, the good thing about it is, like I said, you got Lomond Gordon, which you think, you know, they own next year, that's a, a hundred and fifteen million dollars for the jobs, and, and all the credit.
Yeah, I can understand that, but, you know.
I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree.
Just this, you know, this contractual.
Glad it's, uh.
Fees, it's just, it's massive amount of money here. And the thing is, when we ask for money, um, it's like nobody knows where it's coming from, but then we find all this money here that comes from somewhere.
Yeah, it's like, you got, you got to close the landfill, we close it, you know.
But it still takes money, though.
Takes money, takes money.
About ninety-two thousand dollars we pay for those law firms, plus he makes about sixty pounds. For the record, that's a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars we're paying for that.
And that's, can you let around that machine? Is that his base salary, or that extra that's been charged to the account?
I took off the property, man, it's still at ninety-two thousand.
That's his base salary?
That's, that's extra than salary.
Ninety-two thousand dollars extra than salary.
Got it.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And we can't give employees any raise.
I tell you, we're down, we're down another trail, man, that's a resolution, town of Loudfire Park.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we got a request from Town of Loudfire, um, asking us if they would, if we would provide fire protection for the Town of Loudfire, and, um, and as my understanding, basically talking with the, uh, Mr. Taylor of Town of Loudfire, is that, um, they would like to, you know, entering this agreement, this is consideration, should be responsible for all fire calls and their equipment, county shall be allowed to lease Town of Loudfire building, which before they do now, to the town fire department exists and located on Bayberry Street, Grace and Town Hall, for at least a one dollar per year, except for county, since all responsible for fire calls. Uh, they, they run very few fire calls on the exact number, but they do not beat it. And so, um, uh, I see it being very little, very little occurring, very little expense to us to provide the service to them. So therefore, if they're requesting, I would recommend we go along with this, Taylor.
Do we have a motion that we're, sir, instead of listening to that, Mr. Chair? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Young, five, six years ago, we agreed to pay the light bill for that facility. Now, we're sending the five hundred dollars a month to Town of Loudfire.
Four hundred.
Four hundred, okay. Now, if we're gonna take over your fire service, are we gonna still send Loudfire the four hundred dollars, or are we gonna pay the bill ourselves? Is the power meter going in our name, or how are we gonna do this?
Actually, the, yeah, that's right, it's, yeah, the, uh, the new section, basically, well, they call their section, it's kind of separated from ours, you know, having it on its side, and then we lease the part that's on our side, you know what I mean? So, yeah, we probably will incur a few, few, few extra dollars for that.
When I called it in, you had to answer my question.
Yeah, yeah, we will probably incur a little bit more expenses.
Yeah, we're gonna rent their facility for, you said, a dollar a month. What I'm, all I'm saying is, is the power meter gonna be transferred into county's name, or we pay the bill, or we're gonna keep sending Loudfire the four hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, I think we'll, as far as I know, we're probably still sending the four hundred a month, but then, uh, the lease our part of it.
Are they gonna pay the light bill? You're confusing me.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna pay the light. As far as I know, we didn't get into all the details, but like I said, they're gonna, we're gonna, we'll have to pay some of them, some of the electricity costs or water, some costs, you know.
If we lease in the fire department, so, what do you pay the utility or some part for?
Yeah, we already paid some of them, already.
Are we paying it on the whole town hall there?
No, no, just, just the part, just the part, yes.
We're sending them four hundred dollars.
We're sending four hundred dollars.
Pay their light bill. My point is, when they put the light meter in our name, and stop sending them four hundred dollars, that's what I'm saying.
I'll negotiate, I'll get that with you, I'll take care of that.
But we don't have to pay the firemen and the engineers, no?
Well, just, just, yeah, they'll be, when they run a town call, what they call, you know, inside of town limit, that will, will incur, we'll pay our fire guys.
We already paid, yeah, we already paid. It's the same fire.
It was the same fire.
Low hanging cost.
There'll be a few extra calls at the town.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and four discussion. Only favor, raise the right hand. Okay, we're down here on number eight, the county county commission, member District Six, Robby Cowan. We put that off the next one. Dillon County Board of Zoners Appeal District One, Randy Goins has the phone. We also have District Six, Robby Cowan.
Separate, separate appeal. I got to put this in the form we get.
We're on zone.
It's supposed to be a P.
We're on zone.
Back up there, I ain't got back now.
You ain't got no backup there? Okay, we're down to District Seven, secret fire. Okay, we're, we're big back home, the justice for next one. Okay, on eight, six, Dillon County Board of Assessments and Appeal District Six, that's Robby Cowan, you have the phone as well?
Yes, sir, the form we get.
Okay, the form we get, um, on, Robby, for the Board of Assessments and Appeal, we have a motion to set this right in the race.
Make a motion.
Is that certain? The only favor, raise the right hand. Well, I wanted a question, but it's too late now.
I'm leaving.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're down to number nine. Would that be conflict of interest?
Whose, whose place has he taken?
Who's on the, this progress team, is that what he put?
Yeah. I'm going to court next, uh, in July against LeBron on his tips, and I'm probably under eighty-five.
He can excuse himself, that case came, I mean, but after that, he started acting as a member, can't he?
I mean, I don't have nothing personal against him, nothing, but he's, uh, make long story short, uh, I think he's been wrong, but.
Well, I made that motion, we put this in the form we get. It's all been passed.
I don't have a dispute.
I mean, he can excuse himself, he's got a case or something, I mean, I didn't.
I don't have a dispute with him, I might say, I, um.
That's what's on that part of it, but he can come back, I mean, yeah, he can do.
All right, and I'll, for the rest of the crap, if he's gonna excuse himself, that was my point.
But another thing I need to say, is all the members of the appeals board, they need to appear when we have a meeting, and one or two of them, and we have to have a forum, uh, because, I mean, we need to listen to the people, and their, their opinion counts.
Mr. Rogers, you led the head, you contact them, and tell them the person about their non-attendance.
My first contact.
And they still not show up?
They, they, one time, out about five minutes. So I'd say it's important to be representative, you know, sometimes it can't be helped, you know, you're working, or, you know, stuff like that, it's a shit. I mean, Stevens, you know, he's been sitting for a while.
Is there a rule or anything you, y'all have in writing, if they don't show up at a certain number of times, that they can be dismissed? Do you have anything?
I don't know of any rules.
Maybe, maybe something we can get up to the table, which is, I'm talking about, Mr. Turner, would that be appropriate, that we go to the table and put something right?
Scott.
Mr. Scott, um, I know we redid these ordinance, I thought we put a provision in there, I know we did some of them. Um, I know we did the zoning board, put a provision in there about absence and removal for cars. I just need to take a look at the, um, turning field, I thought we done the same for it, but I'll just need to look at it, I don't remember off the top of my head, I thought we made them more consistent, I thought.
They, they usually get paid by a month, and now to get paid, did they show up? But as long as we got a forum, you know, the majority four, I was saying, the bits, uh, you know, just better when you got more, get a varied thing.
What's the problem if they show up?
Sir? Sir, where is the pay if they show up?
Where's the pay? You said they get paid if they show up?
Uh, fifty dollars or maybe, I think.
I think we just now say it's in the budget. I think we put it consistent on it, so that you would establish it every year in the budget, how much it is.
I think that's what it is. I just turned it.
This wouldn't be no thing.
It's a budgetary matter, if you don't have, if you don't have it in the budget. The tax will pay you fifty dollars.
If there's no pay, that would explain why you don't get people to show up.
They get paid, I mean, but they got to show up to get paid now, used to be, used to be paid fifty bucks.
You said they always have gotten paid, so.
Yes, sir.
If they show up.
Mr. Scott, we'll look at that, I think we made it consistent on all the boards, but we'll, Jamie's gonna not look at that.
Okay, Mr. Scott, we made a motion, it was such, when we voted on that, I didn't know anybody, um, you know, that, that, well, this up before we voted, it might have been different voter, I don't believe it's already been done now, but I feel certain, the phone, the gift, excuse itself for anything concerning him before the poll. We're down to number nine, I think we have a question.
Don't move.
The second.
I say it.